All right, well, let's go ahead and do, we'll just call to order and do roll call, and then we'll get in. So we'll call a meeting to order here at four o'clock.
Mr. Chavez.
Here.
Mrs. Evenson.
Here.
Mrs. Heights.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Ms. Lima.
Here.
All righty. So this evening, we have the special meeting for our budget presentation, which we do in public, so that if anybody has any comments, that we can have those be made. So we'll go ahead and have Mel come up to do the budget presentation. And then if the board has any discussion or questions after that, we can present those. And then we'll move into our other business items. I'll move to approve the agenda after this.
All right, good evening.
Are we going to have the presentation up here? Or do I need to? While you guys get that up, do I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? A second? All right, we'll go ahead and just vote on that, Amy, real quick.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Evenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
I want to send out a public apology to our public, our community. I know on Facebook, it says that our meeting is at five o'clock and on the 22nd of May, and it says virtual only. So I know it's kind of, somebody put that it was confusing, and I did see it online this morning for the same time, so I want to apologize to our community for that, so they don't think we're being snivvy or sneaky or anything like that.
Is that for one of our other meetings, perhaps, and maybe?
Yeah, it just said special board meeting at four.
Okay. Okay. Four twenty-two? Okay, okay, so it's been removed. Thank you. All right, thanks for your clarification.
All right. So I just want to start off by saying that the budget process is a month-long process. It's collaborative, so a lot of this information isn't, information that you're hearing for the first time, but it is a chance to present it publicly. So the budget process really begins in the early spring, when we start looking at early revenue projections, how we start looking at our current costs, our current folks and positions, and truing up the salary and benefit component. And then through the budget request process. Getting requests, prioritizing requests, and then looking at the available dollar. It kind of ends with employee compensation of what we're able to do for staff based on the available funding. And so all of that information will be put together. In your materials, you have a complete budget packet that'll be posted online. And then you also have a reconciliation, taking our current budget and putting all, summarizing all of the changes into the proposed budget for the general fund, and then also a page in there that breaks down the individual changes by fund as well. And so starting with the school finance funding, it's set by Senate Bill 24-188 this year that sets our funding levels. Each district has a unique PPR amount that they receive, amount of funding per student. And this year, that was based on 5.2% inflation. And the budget stabilization factor was fully bought down for the first time in 15 years. I know we've talked about it, but it's important to note that that wasn't repealed, but it was bought down to zero. So it is still a tool that the state has when they run short on funds. And so I wouldn't be surprised, surprised if it comes back in the future sometime, but for now, it's a celebration that it's gone. Then there was a new formula that was also passed for next, it will start in '25, '26, so the following fiscal year. That was House Bill 24-1448. And it'll happen over a six-year phase-in implementation. And like we've talked about in other meetings, it did reduce the averaging from five years to four years, which will be a pretty significant impact to us. But there are hold harmless provisions, as well as amendment that was added for a plus-up, guaranteeing that even above the hold harmless provision, we would see at least a 0.5% increase to total program through the implementation. There's also in the work is a funding adequacy study that'll be completed by January 2025. And so we know that how Colorado funds K-12 education in comparison to national level. And so there is a committee looking at that, just to see if that level is appropriate or what is truly needed in order to be able to fund education properly. So just to recap, the budget stabilization reductions, it was a cumulative hit to our funding of almost $248 million, going back to 2009, '10. You can see some individual years, it was as much as $25 million, even as recently as 2020, '21, the year after COVID. And the economy had less money available there. You can see that it came right back to $24.8 million. And then it's been bought down significantly in the year since until it reached zero. If we're looking at the per pupil revenue, it will increase from $10,033.51 in our current budget to $10,795.03 in the proposed budget. That's an increase of $761 per student, or 7.4%. That's going to be offset by a reduction in our funded pupil count due to declining enrollment. And so currently, we're funded for 20,260 students. Next year, we're projecting that that averaging will be a reduction of about 500 more pupil FTE, so funding for $19,763. Our actual student decline is projected at 637 FTE, but with averaging, we don't bear the full brunt of that each year. But 500 pupils is still a pretty significant hit. So that takes that 7.4% increase to PPR and nets against the declining enrollment that our revenue is actually going to increase by 4.9% over current. So right under $10 million. It's important to note that our new revenue would have been over $15 million if we were budgeting for the same 20,260 students in our current budget. And so that's where we start looking for ways to close that gap between the $10 million we'll receive and the $15 million. Looking at some other revenue adjustments, there'll be an increase to special education categorical funding. We don't have our allocation at this time, but just projecting the statewide increase of 10.2% would mean $933,000 to the districts. Adjustment to interest revenues, you'll see this in the general fund, as well as several other funds that have interest earnings. And that's just in anticipation of rate reductions at some point in the fiscal year. Projected E-rate reimbursement is expected to increase a little bit, $62,000. And then our ROTC reimbursement is based on the salaries of those folks, so we're expecting a slight increase as well. And so that brings the total revenue adjustments from our current budget to next, to 10.4. So in looking at how we close that funding gap, the savings from the fruit of eight-nine reconfiguration is, of course, the largest savings for next school year. And that's a savings of over $2.1 million. We're also still holding true to our systemic staffing model at the middle and high school levels. And so there were some reductions in staffing as well, based on projected counts. That's the 226. We had a one-time budget for the Spanish resource, the NYPD program out at Mount Garfield. And so putting, taking that budget back out. And then we've been working on looking at our partnerships with community organizations. And so there are some budgets that we'll be able to pull back. And so next year, the strategic plan support provided by CEI will be grant-funded, so that's a savings of $43,000. I'll be pointing back on the partnership with the Chamber for our Community Workforce Coordinator, and that's $20,000 savings. And then through the negotiations process, there's a change to the MVA president's salary cost share, saving $75,000 to the general fund. So when you put those all together, we were able to allocate an additional $2.5 million just by looking at these savings. We've also been planning for the end of our ESER grant. Our ESER grant has been a huge boost to the district, obviously, through some very difficult times around COVID and learning recovery. And it was a very sizable federal grant, but we also knew that we had a lot of staff that was in there and that we were wanting to keep the most important student supports out of that, the most critical positions. And so we've been planning in the current budget, setting aside dollars for how to keep as much of that as we could. And so ESER items will be continued in the amount of $5.6 million. And that includes our online program, floating substitutes, behavior specialists, suicide prevention specialists, mental health therapists, MTSS, all of those direct student supports, our HVAC tech, and then a part-time custodial secretary, and then keeping our ESER grant accountant on for this next year as well. We'll also be able to keep funding for the summer school program. That was something that had been reduced from the general fund in past years, some budget cuts. And so we set aside funding to continue that. And these ESER intervention software subscriptions. Previously, schools had the option of using their individual intervention allocations to fund some of these software subscriptions. But we'll be able to continue it at the district-wide level, getting better pricing by doing it that way, and then also not impacting their individual school budgets. With the end of ESER, we also won't have indirect, and so there was an adjustment there. And so this next section are kind of the required costs and transfer adjustments, the things that we would do each year. And so the per pupil revenue would say increasing, the amount that we pass on to charters also increases. We've talked about our medical insurance fund being in a much better position than in the past, since we'll be able to pull back $1 million of that support that's currently being provided by the general fund and get back to regular district share increases. So we'll be looking at a 2.6% increase to district share and premiums at open enrollment that will happen in the December payroll, and that's a cost of over $300,000. And then I mentioned that we pull in our current folks and positions and do a true-up there of salary and benefits, and that's that $449 that you see. I know you'll have a presentation in June, I believe, about some of our utility savings, but that's really a credit to that department, that we're adding $150,000 instead of a much larger number because of some of the savings opportunities that they've been able to realize in the current budget and then planning for next year's usage as well. And then we have our transportation contract, which is a 2% increase annually. So that's $145,000 there. After that, there were some priority budget requests through the budget request process. We tie our CTE budget allocations at the school level based on the amount that we receive in reimbursement, at 5%, and so a true-up there. Adding three additional CLDE teachers next year. Adding three additional custodians at the new Grand Junction High School. And then providing funding for an MOU or a Title IX decision-maker, as well as setting aside a placeholder for some grant-writing contracted services. So when it comes to employee compensation, I know later in the meeting, you'll be approving the agreement that came through negotiations. But there's just been a really a focus on improving staff pay and our ability to attract and retain employees, especially with inflation what it is, difficult labor market, and then also just knowing kind of what we've been able to offer as pay in the past compared to other districts that we compete against. And so just to highlight a few of those changes, the teacher's salary schedule, starting pay will be over $50,000 next year, $50,015. So we've come a long way there from just $37.5, four years ago, I think it was. We'll be able to offer a one-step increase in 7% cost of living, as well as continue the transitional GMI stipends up to $3,600 for next year. So those changes are at a cost of about $9 million for MVEA-covered employees. It was also negotiated for the expansion of national board certification stipends for school counselors and school psychologists. So we're anticipating that that will add about $57,000 of cost. And then there were some recommendations to the extracurricular salary schedule for some market adjustments there for $22,000. We'll be able to apply that same increase of one step and 7% cost of living to other employee groups as well. And so that's a cost of 5.6, bringing our total employee compensation increases to $14.8 million for next year. In addition, and I'll talk a little bit more about reserves coming up here, but there's a plan to use $2 million of reserves to fund some one-time expenses. It's important to note that that's what we would use reserves for, our one-time expenses, that we know that there's an end to or a plan for. And so being able to sustain 22 and 1/2 unfunded FTE at the elementary school level for next year at a cost of over $2 million. And then our ESER grant accountant, just being able to keep him on through our audit and grant closeout. These funds were generated in the current budget through some ESER funding swaps for staffing. And so just to kind of piece it all together, we had $8.6 million set aside in our current budget. We've been able to reallocate that out, covering all of those essential items, the continuation of ESER items, the budget requests, and then the required expenditure and transfer adjustments to within $84,000. So that meant that our new PPR, our new spend money, our new revenues, $10.4 million of that, as well as the savings from systemic staffing in the eight-nine building, we're able to fund the salary and benefit increases. And then again, utilizing that $2 million from reserves for one-time expenses in next year. So what that means is that our revenues next year will be at $245.5 million, and our expenditures will be $247.5. And so that's where we see the results of operations of dipping into reserves. So just to kind of do a deep dive into reserves, I know there's been a little bit of talk around it this year. And so reserves play a critical role in ensuring the financial health and stability of school districts, allowing districts to fulfill their educational mission effectively while weathering financial challenges. And so if you've been around our district for a while, for any time, even as recently as the COVID year, certainly going back to the Great Recession, you can probably think of instances where it would have been really great to have reserves to ensure financial stability. So it's a safety net for unexpected expenses or emergencies without having to resort to drastic measures immediately, like budget cuts or layoffs. We know that oftentimes, we aren't sure of our funding levels until May. And so when there's a reduction, it's extremely reactive in order to be able to cover that shortfall for the next year that starts in July. Budget planning, so reserves allow districts to plan budgets more effectively. It means that like we can in the next year, we can cover temporary shortfalls in revenue or fund one-time expenses without impacting ongoing programs or services. And then cash flow management, so just the timing of how we receive our cash. Typically, we receive the bulk of our property taxes starting in about March, which means that the months between January and February are really lean as far as cash flow and meeting payroll and utility expenses. And so just having more cash on hand helps smooth that out throughout the year. And then state funding fluctuations, we've lived that, like, we'll continue to live that, that we're extremely dependent on our state funding mechanisms, and any fluctuations based on state revenue and legislative decisions are impactful. And so they provide a buffer that we can ease into potential legislative changes or any potential cuts while maintaining programs and services. So some historical perspective is that our reserves have hovered around 5% to 6% of expenditures for many years, looking back. In the past, we've had to borrow from the state's interest-free loan program to help manage cash flow just to meet payroll. And that was as recently as the 2011 fiscal year. But we also applied for the program for many years after, just because we were cutting it so close that we had that available just in case we ran into cash flow challenges during those lean months. The low point was at the end of the 2016 fiscal year, where we ended at just 4.5% of expenditures and transfers held in reserves. And then currently, as we're all aware, we've been using the ESER funds in order to improve that situation. So these once-in-a-lifetime federal funds were unique in that you could supplement, supplant existing costs into them. So in normal federal grants, there's a supplement, not supplant, meaning that they can only be used to offer additional services, not to cover existing. But through ESER, we were able to apply an unrestricted indirect cost rate, as well as move costs into the grant temporarily. And both of these strategies we use to generate these one-time dollars back into the general fund. So ESER funds have definitely helped over the years. We've covered staffing overages, unfunded positions from ESER multiple times. And it's really helped us ease into some staffing adjustments made necessary by declining enrollment. Of course, that's ending. And so having ESER as the buffer will end as well. And it means that the general fund will once again be our district's sole source of emergency funding. So just to look at some trends. The graph on the right, I know we shared it at negotiations and probably a couple other places as well so far, but just looking back over five years, including the current proposed budget, the blue indicates our reserve levels, the red is salary and benefits, and the yellow is total expenditures. And so our salary and benefit costs have increased from $139 million to $202 million since fiscal year '21. Our salary and benefits are by far our largest cost category, accounting for nearly 82% of our budget. Total expenditures and transfers have increased from $179 million to $248 million. And then reserves, through that conscious effort, we have increased from 14% at the end of fiscal year '21 to 18.9% projected and budgeted for for the end of fiscal year '25. That's crazy. Okay. So we've kind of discussed this too, is there's best practice recommendations for what reserve levels we should have. Each district is unique in the amount of funding that they receive from the state versus local, property taxes versus seat share. Even within local share, there's considerations for if you have like a high concentration of oil and gas or something that's pretty volatile or a lot of your property taxes come in from just one or two major companies. That would certainly be more risky as well. So there's unique factors for each of the districts. And you can see, these are our comparable districts. I know I've shared this graph before. And so there's any range, but we're right in the middle of that graph at about 26% held in reserves. And this was looking at the general fund as well as the capital projects fund. So it would include our Tabor reserves and then the reserves for both of those two funds. And so you can look at St. Rain, obviously, as the extreme example within that. They're the one that's way up there. But thinking about local context, we know where they've come from too, and some of the local issues that they've had in their district. And so that makes sense as a reaction to that. But we're definitely towards the bottom of the mix as of the end of this fiscal year up here, which was '22, and it's the most recent year available. And so we're just trying to improve that situation and get closer to the middle ground within all of those districts. So the state statute only requires a 3% Tabor reserve. In reality, you can almost never access those Tabor reserves. So they're meant for declared emergencies, like a natural disaster, and they're meant to be paid back within the same fiscal year. So if we were looking to use them just for state shortfalls, that wouldn't be a qualifying reason. A good rule of thumb is that our unassigned fund balance should be equal to at least three months of payroll expenses, just to have all of the flexibility that I talked about in the previous slide. And so if you look at our budget, our proposed budget summary, we're anticipating in there that our reserves would end at 18.9%, going from 48.7% to 46.7% by that utilization of fund balance. Our current board-designated minimum is 10%, which would only be 24 million held in reserves. But three months of payroll budgets for next year will be over $50 million. And so we're still not there, but we're definitely getting closer from where we've ever been in the past. And so for that reason, and I know I've talked to you, Board, already about it, but we'll be bringing forward a resolution to be included with our budget resolutions in June to take that 10% and increase the minimum to be 18%, getting us closer, but not to that three-months reserves.
Just to reiterate, that's a minimum of 18%.
Yes.
Meaning we should never drop below that. Again, I'm just kind of pointing that out for everybody.
Yeah, and what the resolution is.
So, I mean, that's just nuts not to have at least three months
Yeah.
in reserve.
And what the resolution will actually say is that if we did need to dip into the reserves, we just need board approval to do so. So we're locking them up. They're not something that we can access, but if there was a critical need, we can access it with your approval.
Which is why we have it.
Yep, precisely.
And that would have to happen in public.
Yes.
So our community would also be fully aware that we were dipping into those and what that would be used for.
Yep, absolutely. Are there any questions on the general fund piece of it?
I have some questions on the reserves, but I can wait till the end, if that's better.
Yeah, I'm almost to the end. So there were just some highlights from the other funds. Fund 19 for our preschool program and Fund 21 for our nutrition services. Both of those funds had significant changes to the way they received their revenue last year. And so we're still working through some of those changes. So for Fund 19, they're still being supported by a transfer from the general fund for $400,000 during this kind of transition. With the change to universal preschool, they'll be adding full-day options at Career Center, Loma, and Pear Park as well next year. In the current year, we're only offering part-day programs. And then Nutrition Services had the change with the Healthy Meals for All program through the state. And the state's run into a little bit of a funding issue with that in that there's more participation than they had funding for or were anticipating. And so they've been trying to balance the federal funding and maximizing that to ease off the state funding. And I know that in Nutrition Services, they're working very diligently just to manage their labor costs with these increases to pay and then the food costs that we all know and feel. And so they're making some adjustments internally in order to balance their budget for next year. And then lastly, the Medical Self-Insurance Fund 62, just reducing that transfer from the general fund support from $1.5 million to $500,000. So still making sure that we have fund stability going forward, but also getting back to going with regular increases that are manageable, both for the district and employees. So the next steps are today's, the presentation to the public of our proposed 24-25 budget. We're required to do that by May 31st. The budget document will be available in our office for the public to preview, as well as it'll be on our transparency page after tonight. There will be a public notice published in the newspaper over the weekend informing taxpayers of two public hearings in order to give feedback on the proposed budget. The first will be at the June 4th board meeting, and the second will be on the June 18th board meeting. At that same June 18th board meeting will also be the resolutions to adopt the budget, which we must do by June 30th. And so the standard resolutions are just the budget adoption itself, the use of beginning fund balance for any funds that plan to do that, and then borrowing any money between funds throughout the year. And then the fourth one is the additional one to modify the reserve fund balance requirements. All right, that's all I have. Do you have questions on reserves?
I do, but with Barb being online, Barb, do you have any questions?
I don't right now, thank you.
Okay, wanted to check, since I can't see you. Okay, well, Dr. Hill might actually have to answer one question. What is the, where did I put it? The Title IX MOU, what is that for?
So Tammy could probably speak this better than me, but with all the changes to Title IX, when we have Title IX investigations that come forward to us, it's very time-consuming. And what we've had to do, because we don't have a position right now to handle that, we've had to pull other staff from their duties. So it could be a senior leadership member, it could be somebody else, and say, "We need you to be the Title IX investigator on this." And that's not a good way to handle it. So it would be to pay somebody to be able to be in that role for us. I think it's contracted services. I don't think we're actually hiring.
Yeah, it's set up to be an MOU, so it would be kind of like a stipend pay, probably for like a pair retiree or some type of position like that.
And is that for the federal changes that came down, or is there other changes? Okay. Okay, so it's nothing new, but it just works with the coordinator, the investigator, and the decision-maker. And the decision-maker cannot, well, cannot be one in the same present, or may be able to be investigator, decision-maker. Okay. Okay, with the new regs. Okay. Okay. It will help streamline our side of it to have someone appoint. Okay, alright, so, Barb, did you raise your hand?
If you can just clarify that, 'cause if they're not holding a microphone, then I can't hear them, and I'm sure the audience can't hear them either if they're live viewing.
Yeah.
Um, so, I guess what I'm gathering is that that is because the decision-maker has to be independent from the investigator. Is that correct? And we also don't currently have an investigator?
Well, with the new regs, with the new regs, the decision-maker and investigator may be able to be one in the same person. But Tammy did clarify that these are not new regulations. It's just that they're, the pressure is being put more on the K through twelve. It's more, it's usually been put on the university portion more, so.
I, I do have an investigator.
Oh, you do?
We currently have an investigator. So, Jan Blair is our Title IX Compliance Officer. Um, she is also our interim, interim Special Education Director. And, um, we have also utilized principals to be investigators. So, we currently run a Title IX. Just all the decision-makers have been staff across the district. And I mean, all the way down, Jackie Anderson, Nikki Johnston, Sherry Taylor. I mean, they're going everywhere. And so, we really just need to, um, have o- one person who can just sit down and review, um, the decis-, or the investigation and render a decision. And so, it is an MOU because there may be weeks we don't use them, and then there may be weeks where we have ten. It just depends.
But nothing, but Barb, nothing new. These are just things that have been ongoing, and we're just trying to streamline the process instead of going all over with staff, is my understanding.
These regs actually made it easier for K-12.
Okay.
In, in that aspect.
Okay.
Okay.
Was that good, clear for you, Barb? And that, I think that would hopefully be clear for our audience as well. Thank you for that reminder. Okay, thank you. And then, um, okay, so with reserves, are you able to speak to, like, what factors contributed for those reserves to get so low in the past? And like, if we had had higher reserves in, say, like, oh-eight, like, what we would have avoided? I think that might just be helpful for us to understand.
Yeah, so, back in oh-eight, I was with the district but not doing the budget yet. Um, but in some of those years, um, our staff salaries were going backwards. We had furlough days that were added. So, not only not giving increases for cost of living or steps, um, but people's salaries were actually going down from year to year, um, as well as there were, uh, some reductions in force that we had to do. And so, those were pretty reactory, where we didn't have a whole lot of time to make those adjustments. Um, I know even in like the, the year that our funding was reduced in twenty-twenty, twenty-one, um, be, as a result of COVID. In that year, again, we were just looking at positions that were vacant at the time, that somebody was leaving, they were retiring, and those were the positions that were identified not to be backfilled. And so, we've had to make some pretty immediate budget reductions just because of our level of reserves. It just knowing our funding situation, if it weren't for ESER, there's never really a time that we could afford to say, "Hey, we have all of these needs. Our pay is what it is compared to other districts, but we need to put a million dollars towards reserves and take away some of the limited availability of money." And so, I think that it's just, there isn't usually that opportunity for us to have excess funding that we can stick into reserves, unless there was something like ESER that was unique, that we could, um, be really strategic in order to free up those dollars without making reductions or limiting what we were able to do in the general fund.
And that's super important for our community to understand that, you know, by the few good things that happened around COVID, those ESER dollars allowed us to replenish, or at least pay for other things so that we could, I'm not sure whether it went both directions or, or it was just strictly the ESER funds that were used. But, um, it allowed us to make up for that lost time, that there's no other way we could have caught up that much ground.
Right, so going forward, if you can think about when we're normally prioritizing what we do with our new money, um, the likelihood that we would take funds away from other needs within the district to put into reserves isn't great unless it was really critical that we did. And so, now our reserves are at a more appropriate level, where we have a little bit of breathing, breathing room. Um, it, with declining, um, enrollment over the last few years and staffing adjustments, we've been able to kind of cushion some of those and carry us along because of ESER dollars. But now, we're going back to where general fund is at. And so, we need to be mindful that just that we're not going to be able to add to reserves likely in the future, like we have been the last few years, and just keeping the ground that we have been able to make up.
Do we, um, do we have a plan moving forward, though, to be contributing at least some amount to reserves? Like, ongoing?
I don't have a plan like that, no.
I, for one, would still like to, yeah. Well, if, if the eighteen percent is the minimum, but it still doesn't get us at three months solid number for reserves that we could possibly need, I, I think that's something I'd like to work on, at least for next year, to make sure that we're somehow continuing to, you know, tighten our budget every place that we can. Especially, and then really making at a point to get those reserves to where they need to be. Okay. And with every year, I mean, it's a percentage, but at every year that everything else goes up, the reserves have to go up.
Hey, that's what I was just gonna say, is I think that we'll already have to build into our budget in order to keep pace with that percentage.
Right.
Um, it might be difficult to also simultaneously increase the percentage. But, I mean, it's the resolution that you guys will approve, and if we need to add language in there to work towards building it up to a higher level, we could do that. I know in our current resolution, it was to set it at eight percent, and then that it would go to ten percent if student October count was at a certain level or if funds were available. And so, we could put some kind of provision like that in it too, just that the three months of payroll expenses is the ultimate goal to get to.
We also, could we, this is completely just off the top of my head, but could we also possibly, um, prioritize the reserves? You know, instead of, I mean, let's say we get some kind of additional money from some place. Um, if we could prioritize getting our reserves to where it needs to be, um, rather than, I don't know, do, do something that, um, maybe isn't quite as meaningful.
I think if we, if we had an influx of money, then that could be presented to the board to,
Yeah.
basically with a recommendation from the district.
I don't want to lose sight too, that, um, like, I want all that to happen as well. But these other districts as well have much better funding than we do. And so, it's a lot easier to put fifty percent reserves at St. Rain if you're getting funded way better than we are. And, you know, a lot of that's coming from, uh, local mill levy overrides. So, I, I, we have an interest as well to make sure that we have a, a level of reserves that, I mean, it would be great to get to the three months payroll. Um, and then, like you said, if, if salaries go up, then we have to contribute to that. But we also, um, not knowing exactly what the budget's gonna look like, we have to make sure that we're, the other priorities that we've talked about, like, continue to try to be competitive with salaries for teachers and others, that we can balance those things. So, I, we definitely have an interest in looking at all those things. I just, I don't want to lose sight of the fact, though, that those districts are at an advantage um, because of, um, where they're at with funding. And so, that may end up being a conversation we're gonna have to have down the road about if we're running out of these options to continue to prioritize teacher pay and things like that. Do we need to go back to our community for, um, for the mill levy overrides? But, um, so, yeah, but those are definitely interests we have as well.
So, in the next few weeks before June eighteenth, we'll continue to kind of work on that and draft it and see where we can land. Um, but for sure, it would be great to be able to at least increase it to eighteen percent since we have it available. Um, but it is a delicate balance between deploying the resources that we have for the needs that we have, and as well as saving for emergencies or rainy days. So, there's always that trade-off.
Yeah, I guess I'm, yeah, I know we can't commit to anything right now. What I'm thinking of is, you know, how we have the regular increase with our insurance. I just, I wonder, you know, as, do we need to look at something similar where we, we're, we're putting aside, you know, at least contributing some money? It may not be as much as we would like, but it, at least it helps that ungrow a little bit versus like, if we're contributing zero dollars. So, I think that's just where, what we, what we can save or squeeze would be at least something versus nothing. But I agree, we also need to make sure that we have funds available to fund programs and people and other things that are a priority for us, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
Lots of, lots of priorities, and they all take funding, so it's just a balancing act, so I appreciate that, so. Um, no, I appreciate you, um, touching on the reserves. When did, um, I know that we did Steps and Lanes before. Um, when, when did we do Steps and Lanes years ago, and for how long was that?
Nikki, do you remember the year we went away from them?
In twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we went away from Steps and Lanes. Okay. I remember our first year here, it was brought up, and then it was said we had been away from it for like six or seven years, maybe, so. And that was, what, twenty-one? So, yeah. Okay, I, I, do you know? Um, and you can get back to me on this, is, where, did the Steps and Lanes help us more? I'm just wondering if that made a big, um, difference, you know, with the budgeting for the district, so.
Um, I think budgeting, both systems were predictable, and I could budget. But I think competitively, definitely Steps and Lanes.
Yeah.
Have put us back on the map. Um, but before, only being able to compensate for one advanced degree and that being a stipend pay that wasn't base building, um, that's especially where we were falling behind was in staff having at least a master's and being able to pay them competitively. Um, but budgetarily, I mean, they were both, um, predictable. I would say for employees, it's more predictable to have a Steps and Lane system like we do now.
It seems like it, it's a win-win.
Yeah, but even the way that we had built the other system, I mean, we had built it in a way that was sensitive to being sustainable as well.
Okay, now, that's helpful. Um, just trying to get some more context around kind of where we've been and what's been helpful, so.
Okay.
Um, any other questions on the budget?
Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Mel for all your work on, on that. I know it's a lot of work that goes into it. Um, before you all move on, I just was curious, where, where was it posted incorrectly? It's bugging me now, the meeting date and time.
Just, uh.
Oh, Facebook. Okay, I got my own thoughts on that. Uh, so, um, I was gonna say, 'cause the website, we, I'm pushing people to the, the website has it on there on the right date, and so does the calendar on the website, so it was Facebook. Okay, that's good enough.
And it sounds like it got removed and it's taken care of, so, great. I know, you're good. Right, people should probably always verify on our website and calendar, 'cause sometimes even people could repost and, and write misstiped things, so. Uh, but good, good point, so. Alright, um, we have, um, the ratification of the Mesa County Valley School District Fifty-One and the Mesa Valley Education Association contract. So, do I have a motion, uh, to ratify?
Motion to ratify.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any questions? No, I watched all the meetings, so. I feel like I have a pretty good handle on that, and we, and really good notes that were taken, so. Alright. Alright, we can go ahead and call for the vote then.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Everson?
Yes.
Mrs. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Alright, that passes five-zero. Any, well, I know we had open board discussion afterwards, but any, or just, we need to also do Dr. Hill's evaluation as an executive session for the board. So, um, does it work if I send out some options or dates to the board so that we can do that? Okay, alright, I will send those out to see what works for everybody. Um, if you can't make it, we'll send out the evaluation ahead of time, and we ask the board members to go ahead and fill in, uh, kind of the, the matrix or the scoring of that. And then when we get together, um, then we all discuss it. And then, we typically bring Dr. Hill in at the end and go over with him. Alright, I will send out some dates for the board to see when we can get together to do that. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, thank you, everybody, for your time.